Thank you very much. So this is a little bit of an obscure meeting. This is the first of the year. So today you guys will be determining the chair and vice chair. So until that time period, I'll go ahead and run the meeting. We're going to go with roll call and I will ask your executive director to take role, please.
Commissioner Fernandez, Commissioner Devlin, Commissioner.
O'Brien.
O'Brien. I was gonna say Osborne, Commissioner O'Brien. I'm so sorry. And Commissioner Billingsley? And Commissioner Oland is currently absent. All right, Rhonda, if you want to pull up the planning training really quick, I just want to roll through some Brown Act training and just the purpose of Planning Commission. We do have some new members. Our members from last January, this is the exact same thing, except I'm just going to really roll through because we have a couple of items to get through tonight. I just want to make sure we're all comfortable with the Brown Act. And I know you have to choose a chair and vice chair. So I wanted to do this before that to make sure you're all comfortable with the process of the meeting. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So like I said, we'll just cover what Planning Commission does as well as the Brown Act. Next slide, please. And so the purpose of planning is we try to maximize the health, safety and economic well being of people living in our communities. Planners take a broad view and look at pieces of the community, buildings, roads, parks, and how do those all fit together and interrelate with each other? We then make recommendations. I make recommendations to you and you make recommendations to the city council on how the community should proceed on a number of different topics. Next slide, please. And so you are land use and planning focus. And so the items that are going to come before you are related to those two items. So items you will not see come before you are fee schedules, fees, ultimate development agreements that the city council enters into. But some of the things that you do is you are a quasi judicial group. And so if we do happen to have a revocation hearing, which we had last year with the CUP that is quasi judicial, and so you are in a way kind of a court. So you look at the information that is presented to you at the meetings, and then you make a judgment on the information that is presented in the open session, which we'll cover in the Brown Act meetings. So you'll also hear public hearings like we will tonight with the annexation pre zoning. Rezoning is also see that and conditional use permits. And then you are also the group that is in charge of applying SEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, which we will not go in depth about today, but I will make sure everybody feels comfortable as we move forward. So I'll go to next slide. So you're assisting in a general plan right now, which we're moving through, annually reviewing planning documents that need to be reviewed. So you will get an annual progress report from myself that goes to the state. You'll get that around February, March, as well as the city council. We promote the public interest in planning activities as well as in the general plan. We coordinate plans with other agencies and then undertake special planning studies if those are needed. Next, please. So I offer you recommendations. Planning Commission bases the based on requested information. It's evidence based best practice and case studies. So at any point during this, we've talked about this in other situations. I will just focus on you because everyone else is looking at me like we've talked about this. So I'm here to offer you recommendations. So if there's at any point you feel you need additional information on an item, we can bring that back at a future meeting. We are considered specialists in specific areas. And so tonight we have Michelle and Vanessa from Plan West Partners. They are the consultant helping us with the housing element. So they're housing specialists. So if we do need to get specialists for certain projects, we will bring them in on that. We also help with the interpretation of municipal code and zoning code and implementation of city projects and initiatives. Next slide, please. So the Brown Act is the open meeting law. And so these are the government code sections. If you're feeling feisty on a Friday night and want to read that, I would not advise it. So the basic purpose of the Brown Act is to make decisions transparent, to make decisions publicly, and to make sure that we're not doing anything under the table, that all of your decisions are being made where the public has access to them. So meetings follow are open to the public. We're held on a regular schedule, which is the third Wednesday of every month. They are noticed at least 72 hours in advance. And then if we do happen to have a special meeting, which is what we're scheduling for next Tuesday, which is an option for you. We have 24 hours to post that. We do try to get that posted well before the 24 hour mark. Next slide, please. So any board commission committee has to comply with this law. So you all have to comply with this law. The only exception is ad hoc committees. So if there is a special planning topic you all want to look into, you can assign two of your members to work with myself or with the city manager or whatever specialist we need to do a very focused ad hoc committee on something. For example, the city of Mount Chasta had a cannabis ad hoc that looked at just specific cannabis ordinances and the city of Dunsmere had a short term rental ad hoc that really delved down into that specific topic. That's when those are appropriate and they usually meet more frequently than the regular meeting and then report back out with a deliverable. So the majority of planning commissioners can attend one meeting, but you have to be passive neutral observers. So as you can see here, we do technically have a quorum of our city council tonight. They can be here. They just cannot talk to each other. They cannot make decisions. They cannot, you know, defer anything. They can be passive listeners. They can ask questions. But so you are able to go to things. Just do not talk city business. If you guys want to talk about your kid's soccer game or mountain biking or whatever, you can talk about that. It just cannot come back to city business. Next, please. So again, a meeting is considered a congregation of a majority of you when you're discussing city business. So same time and place to hear and discuss deliberate agency business. This does include technology. So if three of you are in an email correspondence about city business, that is a violation of the Brown Act and discussing anything over the phone as well is the same thing. We'll go over a couple of different examples of that. So the meeting does require a quorum. So congratulations, we have four out of the five of you. Quorum is three. If we did not have three members tonight, we would not be able to have this meeting. We would reschedule for a special or push our items to the next available regular meeting. Next slide, please. So what is not a meeting? Individual contacts and conversations. There's an asterisk near that because there's some different pieces for that. Conferences that are open to the public are not considered a meeting. But again, we do say don't discuss city business with each other. Open and publicize community meetings. So again, the open house or any type of general plan event that happens outside of this, you are all welcome to attend. Again, just don't congregate with each other over the three quorum. Other legislative bodies, you are free to attend city council meetings. One thing we do identify is that as a member of the Planning Commission, you do not speak for the commission as a whole. So we do ask you if you attend a city council meeting or another public governmental meeting to state that you are expressing your opinion as a personal or a resident or citizen, however you would like to state that, but you do not represent the commission as a whole unless the commission has taken an action. So if a majority of you have voted a single way, you can say, yep, we voted to do this. That is okay. There could be Brown Act violations if you attend and discuss city business. So again, please don't do that. Next slide, please. Here's three different types of serial meetings. So there's the hub and spoke. And so if one of you talks to another and then talks to another, that is considered a serial meeting and that's a violation of the Brown Act. A daisy chain, which is member A contacts B, member B contacts C, C contacts D. Again, you're sharing positions around the way, or if you talk about someone else's position, you don't want to do that. And then again, very, I usually blind CC you on all of the emails so that we don't fall into the trap of the reply all. Do not hit reply all. That could be considered a serial meeting. Now, what happens if you violate the Brown Act? It's okay. There's a process called a cure and correct. So someone will basically bring a letter to the city saying that we had violated the Brown Act. They will provide that information and then we will have a cure and correct for that. So if something does happen, it is okay. It is not the end of the world, but please don't do that. But we will take care of it and you're fine. Next slide, please. So an open meeting, we have to have a notice for all open meetings. The agendas are available, open to the public. People are permitted to attend. You cannot take a secret vote. You cannot ballot vote in California secretly. You do have to tell people how you're voting. There are no conditions on attendance. We cannot require people to sign in or charge for that attendance. Next slide, please. Rights of the public, they may address the board, matters on the agenda or matters that are under your purview. For example, if someone wants to come and talk to you about the fee schedule, you do not have purview over the fee schedule and therefore we can request that they take the comment to the city council who has purview over that item. Or if someone wants to come and talk to you about something happening in Montague, we do not have purview over that. So we can ask them to please refrain from those comments. We have no jurisdiction over those matters. We do not do back and forth. So when a public comment is given, we wait until after that is closed. If someone asks a question, I will record that. And if you would like me to answer it, I will answer it in discussion. You just let me know. But we do not go back and forth with the people at the mic. So we cannot prohibit public criticism of an agency and government body. Personal tax. So people can swear. That is allowed. We do ask them to be polite and productive with that. But if someone wants to come in and criticize anybody here, they may do so. We do ask that it's cordial and do those pieces. Also reasonable time limitations and other regulations are permitted as long as you are consistent. So as you'll see, there is a difference between city council and Planning Commission. Last year, the Planning Commission elected to have a three minute public comment timeframe where the city council has a five. Planning Commission is allowed to change that at any time, but we have to hold that for every single public comment and be consistent about that. Next slide, please. So that is very quick, very, very fast. I just want to make sure we're all comfortable today. And any quick questions before we move into you voting for a chair and vice chair? Cool. Thank you. And then just basically for chair and vice chair, you just run the meetings and Jason and I are available to help you with that. So anybody who would like to do that, please do not be intimidated. It is not that hard. We are here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucchese. So yeah, we'll move on to item number four. And I think we'll follow kind of the similar track that we did with the city council. So we'll take nominations. You can nominate yourself to be the chair. And in the order of the nominations, then we'll have everybody vote. And then once a chair is chosen, we'll allow the chair to take over running the meeting and choose lead choosing the vice chair. So do I have any interested parties?
Yes. Although I am reminded of a story about Napoleon. One of his generals came to him and said, I want to promote this man. And Napoleon said, well, why do you want to promote him? And the man said, he's been on every one of your campaigns for the last 10 years. And Napoleon said, well, I have a mule in my commissary department, and it's also been on every one of my campaigns, but it's still a mule.
Mules are.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
But I digress.
So I think. Yeah, and you can still do that. And actually, if it's okay with the the group, I would say, can we just stick to the chair? And then that way we'll allow things to pan out with that new chair for the vice chair position, if that is appropriate. So right now I'm gonna, I go, I have a nomination by Commissioner Devlin for Commissioner O'Brien to be chair. And I have a second nomination from Commissioner Fernandez for Commissioner Devlin to be chair.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? So I will go ahead and let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Lucchese.
Commissioner, this is the motion to appoint Commissioner O'Brien to the chair position for the Planning Commission. How do you vote Commissioner Fernandez? Commissioner Devlin? Commissioner Billingsley? Commissioner O'Brien? Do you want me to bring over the gavel or do you want to sit in the middle?
Oh, I suppose I should take up my position.
Yeah.
Julian.
Yes. Oh, you got a little fancy thing.
Say you want to help.
So your next order of business is to appoint a vice chair. And I believe there was a ready from Commissioner Devlin to nominate Commissioner. Chair O'Brien, you might just want to ask if there's any other nominations for vice chair? And if not, you may take a vote on Commissioner Fernandez being your vice chair.
Take a vote.
Do you want me to roll call for you?
Please.
Commissioner Fernandez. It is. You can abstain. It's fine. Okay, Commissioner Devlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Billingsley?
Aye.
Chair O'Brien?
Aye.
Congratulations. Well, you guys can move if you want. It's up to the chairs purview, however you want to do it.
Okay.
We'll set you up. Great, great. And then Commissioner O'Brien, our next item on the agenda is general public comment. So if you'd like to read that, starting at the bottom of page one.
This is the time for public comments regarding issues or matters not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission of Waireka. Public comments period is not intended to be question and answer period or conversations with the commissioners or city staff. Commissioners, when recognized by chair, may ask questions or present it, but no action may be taken by the planning. Commission during the public comments section of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. Please speak from the podium. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the commission as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a hard copy to the clerk or planning director. And please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Right.
Any? Anybody wish to take advantage of this?
All right.
No.
Next.
Staff and commissioners comments. Members of the planning commission may make brief announcements, reports, or request staff to report to commission on any matter at a subsequent meeting. Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consented agenda are considered routine and non controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the commission wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the public wishes to comment on an item. So the next thing is approval of the minutes of the special meeting held on October 26, 2022.
Can we move to approve all three as they were presented to us? Do we have to do them all at a time?
No, you can do it all at once. So once Peter has, and I can read through them if you'd like as well. But once Peter reads the title of them, you just go motion to approve consent agenda. And you can do that. So Peter, you just have to read through B and C.
All right.
Just the titles.
Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held November 16, 2022, and 2023 Planning Commission meeting schedule. So.
I move to approve items A, B, and C. The minutes of the special meeting held October 26, 2022.
You don't have to read the titles. You can just say A, B, C.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you do not have to read the background for the public hearing. You would just have to state that we're now entering the public hearing and then just read the bolded portion.
A 2022 47 Evans Annexation Pre-Zoning Public Hearing.
All right. Exciting. I haven't been able to start one of these in a while. So on page 10 of your packets, if you're following along, it begins our staff report for the application for annexation. So the the planning department received an application from Rick Evans, as well as representatives from ENS Engineers and Surveyors, Inc. The proposed project would expand one lot from 2.12 acres to 5.21 acres. The second parcel will be reduced from 23.37 acres to 20.17 acres. And this is the property that is within Siskiyou County. And then the applicant will also propose to annex the additional acreage to APN to his parcel within city limits from the unincorporated Siskiyou County. So the property is zoned, are one single family residential and has a general plan land use designation of low density residential. And the applicant is not proposing to change that for the new parcel. And so annexation is a very long process, even for something as simple as this. And so the first step of that process is as the Planning Commission, you need to review the request and you need to make the determination that it is consistent with your zoning code and general plan. And so I provided that information within the staff report as well as adopt a SEQA exemption in this case. If this was a larger scale annexation, there would be a larger SEQA document that we would provide for you, looking at the impacts of annexation. But this is very straightforward because the applicant is not proposing any development on the new land to be annexed. And so it is a little bit hard to follow because there are actually three parcels involved, two within the city limits and one outside. And so on page 11, I tried to give you kind of a box summarizing. So there's basically two boundary line adjustments and then in annexation as part of this one project. So the applicant, as I said before, is just looking to increase the acreage of his existing lot. My understanding is that he would like to have horses and we have a five acre minimum for that. And so the property is in the county is zoned ag two. And so we all fit within those parameters. So going through, I'm not going to go through the entire staff report because you had that in the packet. I'm just going to go through the findings. So the city of Waireka does not have any real findings for annexation and pre zoning. That's something we'll have to change in the future, similar to our conditional use permits. And we do have to have specific findings there. So what I did was I leaned on the local area formation commission, also known as LAFCO, which is the governing body that ultimately determines consistency of annexation with the city's general plan. And so I just stayed with that one finding. And so LAFCO is a governmental body that's kind of a go between between the city and the county to determine if the annexation is done properly. They will also do an evaluation of a tax agreement, which will be the next step after this process. And then ultimately, the final annexation will still come back to Planning Commission and City Council for final approval. So this is just the first kind of initial step for that. And then once we are done, it gets passed off to the city manager's office with the finance director to argue with the county over tax sharing, which I am looking forward to. So today, we do have to open the public hearing and take any public testimony. This was noticed to all of the property owners within 300 feet of the proposed action. Annexations do qualify for that government code section for a public hearing. And this was also placed in a general circulating paper for at least 10 days. After the public hearing and testimony, we'll close public hearing. And then we are recommending adoption of the resolution recommending the city council approve the proposed pre zoning of low density residential. So any questions? This is one of the most straightforward annexations. So it's great to have a trial run before anything bigger. And so Chair O'Brien, it would be open to you now. We can ask the applicant to come up if you would like to give a statement. Are you guys good?
No.
Yeah. So Chair O'Brien, you would then just have to open the public hearing and note the time.
So the public hearing is open. And no one wishes to say anything. So we will close the public.
Well, maybe give them a sec. So this is now the time, if you have a public comment on this item to come up to the podium, if you'd like to make a comment. All right. He was very efficient at reading the room.
So we will close the public hearing and.
You now open into discussion for the commission?
Right. Anybody? Does anyone have anything to say? Seems fairly straightforward.
And so there is a recommended motion on page 10, under recommended action number three.
Commissioner Devlin, I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution 2023 dash 01, recommending approval to the city council to prezone the proposed new APN 062 dash 202 dash 150 low density residential and adopt a class 19 SEQA exemption.
And then you request a second.
Second.
I'll second that.
And then any discussion?
End of discussion. Aye.
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 So Chair O'Brien, you may just want to say all in favor and then have everybody say aye.
Indeed.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
A pause? Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Very easy. And then I would like to take the pulse of the Planning Commission at this time. You do have another item on the agenda that's under new business, which is the Fairchild Crosswalk. And we do have members from ENS here and it is snowing. And I don't know if you'd like to move that up in your agendas before housing element?
Yes, because of the snow.
Yeah, so that they can get home.
But I didn't.
All right.
We all can get home.
Okay. So it is the pleasure of the Planning Commission to move item 10A up to this, or I apologize, 10A or 9, 10A. So we will now hear item 10A and then we will return back to item 9A. All right. So. All right, gentlemen, if we can. All right. So the city of Waireka was approached by representatives from Fairchild Medical Center and Clinics to discuss a new road design to slow traffic, move an existing bus stop at the center west to accommodate future hospital growth, and add a mid block crosswalk on Bruce Street to increase pedestrian access and safety between the clinic and main hospital center. So the city of Waireka follows the city of Reading standards for roadway designs, which does not allow mid block crosswalks, which is why this item is coming before you. It does not fit neatly into our standards. And so the public works director and myself have met with their engineering team and have done site visits to take a look at the design of the mid block crosswalk. We took into account ADA compliance and then we made sure that everything had good sight lines. And so the recommendation that's brought before you has been analyzed by PACE Engineering, the city's public works director and myself. And we have tentatively agreed to put it before you for consideration. We feel that the addition of this mid block crosswalk with the two curb bump outs will actually improve a lot of the pedestrian safety and ADA compliance. And if you're following along, it is page 275 of your packet. Sorry about that. I usually try to catch myself. And so we felt this was a really good project to illustrate the National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACTO, types of design. And so they have integrated in stormwater functions, pedestrian improvements, such as the installation of a push button activated flasher on each side of the crosswalk, in street signage during non winter months, and ADA compliant tactile warnings and surface textures. There are inclusion of curb cutouts within that as well to help with stormwater. And then the bump outs will actually help slow down motorists and improve overall safety of that area. People on Bruce Street can get a good running start. And so for the longevity of all the improvements, the applicant is proposing to install holes in the concrete markers as well to help during the winter season, if and when we do get snow. And so those will be installed so that we can create the longevity for that. So we did find that this is a class one exemption from SEQA. It would not be expanding the road uses usage, and it is considered minor improvements to an existing street. So we do feel it is eligible for that at this time. So I'll open up for questions. So open up for questions.
No questions.
No, it's long overdue.
Yeah.
Because people drive very fast up, up Bruce Street.
Yeah.
You know, to, 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 to get to the parking lot. People think, well, I should, should get there first.
Please for a motion, I can make one.
Uh, we should open up for public comment.
Public comments? Anyone wish to speak?
Yeah, we do have uh, Jose here from E N S who can talk to the design as well if you have any questions. Don't worry.
I do have a public comment, and being that our planning commission's first guideline is safety. Um, I'm wondering if we could get a stop, a four-way stop at Oregon and Bruce Street. I've asked for this before, apparently I was asking the wrong people. Looks to me like it's your job. So I would really like that because the ambulance has a really hard time some getting through there. And I used to live on Anderson, and I have seen many accidents, and I have seen the ambulance almost get hit like five times. So it'd be really cool to have a four-way stop. That way the ambulance has, you know, they wouldn't have to stop at a four-way, they could actually go through. And they would have a chance to go through it instead of being hit by someone screaming downward.
I would recommend you request if there's any other public comments.
Any other public comments at this time?
Okay.
I agree with the lady who said, because Bruce Street is uh, at intersection. I myself have witnessed an accident, and it is uh, it is a tricky one.
Yeah, and for the, the clarification of the public and the planning commission, we do have an internal traffic committee that does actually look at recommendations such as this. Um, so I would recommend following up with myself or Jason, and we can take that to the internal committee. Um, I will state that adding a four-way stop does have to take a look at, because it does change traffic patterns. So we are required to analyze that, not saying we can't do it. Um, but it's something that, you know, will not necessarily come back at the next meeting, but we will, we can take a look at it. Um, is there any other discussion? Uh, so we uh, have a resolution prepared to approve the design as well as adopt the sequo exemption if you are so inclined.
I would make a motion to approve Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero-two, a resolution of the planning commissioner approving the mid-block crosswalk design on Bruce Street between Fairchild Medical Center at four-four-four Bruce Street and Fairchild Medical Clinic at four-seven-five Bruce Street, and adopt a categorical exemption from sequo.
All those in favor?
I second the motion.
There you go. You're just cruising.
Jumping the gun.
You're just cruising.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you. So we will now return to item nine A, and we do have Michelle and Vanessa from Plan West Partners available. And they are going to give us an introductory presentation on our final draft of the housing element. So, uh, thank you, Jose. And so I will, uh, once Reda got, gets that one pulled up. I'm sorry. Yeah, there, uh, no, that's the city council one. Very similar, but not the same.
Nine A, we're on.
We are at nine A, which is on page twenty of your packets is where it begins. So it will begin with a summary memo of the revisions between the draft two today.
Hi, this is Vanessa, and while that's getting pulled up, I just want to make sure you guys can hear me.
Yep.
Great.
Uh, this is Michelle. I just wanted to do a sound check as well since there's an opportunity. Can everybody hear me okay?
Perfect.
Great.
Yeah, there we go.
Great, and is there a way to share the screen too, so I can see that, or will that happen in a minute?
Yeah, we, we've got it.
Got it.
So it should be the upper left-hand one, Reda. It's okay.
On the view menu. Uh, the view uh, to the um, just click, changing the view, there's a view option to change um, the view to normal on that view menu, if you click it in PowerPoint.
You got it? You're good. So in the upper toolbar.
Right.
Yeah.
This slideshow record, view, to change the view. Yeah, to normal, yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Yep. Alright, go ahead, Michelle and Vanessa.
Great, well, thank you for having us uh, this evening. My name is Vanessa Blodgett. I'm a principal with Plan West Partners. And I have Michelle Nielsen here with me. She is a senior planner, and we have been working with uh, Juliana and the city for um, the past year, just about, um, or just over the past year on the housing element update. So we're here today to provide you an overview of um, the process to date and the housing element content and recommendations that we have um, come up with, and then a, provide a brief summary of the updates since the public draft was released. Next slide, please. And here's, yes, so our contact information. Next slide, please. Um, so I just went over the purpose, but we will go over our brief slideshow presentation, then we're happy to answer any questions. Um, and look forward to the discussion at the end also. Next slide, please. So first, I'm just going to provide a really um, brief overview of housing element basics and why we are doing the housing element update. Um, and some of you may have seen this before, but it's a good refresher, I think. Um, so California requires all local governments to adequately plan to meet the housing needs of everyone in the community, and the housing element is an element, required element of the general plan. So it is updated in eight-year cycles and it has to be reviewed and certified by the California um, State Department of Housing and Community Development, H C D. And this, the housing element update in front of you is the sixth cycle. So it's for twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one, and um, the state does prescribe the schedule that the updates must stay on. Next slide, please. So what does a housing element do? Um, an effective housing element provides the necessary conditions for developing and preserving an adequate supply of housing and including housing affordable at all income levels. Um, it provides an assessment of both the current and future housing needs and identifies opportunities and constraints and potential barriers. And then it establishes goals, policies, and programs to meet the housing needs and um, try to remove any barriers that have been identified. Um, and then it is also updated to reflect uh, new state laws. Next slide, please. Um, the housing element identifies strategies and programs that focus on conserving and improving housing, maximizing opportunities, uh, removing barriers and promoting fair and equal housing opportunities for all. Next slide, please. So there are, this is a very small sample of all the new housing laws that are out there in the past few years. Um, just to give you an idea, we're not going to get in-depth into any of these, but are happy to answer any questions you may have about them. Um, but they cover everything from accessory dwelling units, ADUs, um, the surplus land acts amendments, ministerial streamlined approval process, um, by right permanent supportive housing development. So there is a whole um, spectrum of new housing laws that the city um, needs to incorporate into the housing element update. Next slide, please. Um, so the process to date, how did we get here? So it was just about in January twenty twenty-two, we did one of our first community workshops on housing needs with the city. Um, and since then, we have um, and in coordination with, with Juliana and the city, conducted interviews with stakeholders, um, held city council and planning commission workshops. Um, prior to developing the draft, developed programs and the draft document and came back to the planning commission and the city council prior to submitting the draft document to H C D for review. And then the most recent draft has been updated to respond to both public comments that have been received um, throughout the process and then also to respond to H C D comments. Juliana, anything else, I guess, next slide, please? And anything else you um, want to add to this, you're more than welcome to during the presentation. Um.
Yeah, I can jump in at this point. So when we went through our public engagement, we relied on a number of different agencies to help us connect with as many people as possible. So um, we have met frequently with the Kruk Housing Authority. We've met with the Continuum of Care, which works on our unhoused and homeless population within the city as well as other counties in our region. And then we have um, talked to Siskiyou County's Community Development, Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health. Um, who else have we talked to? Um, we did have a report to the city council last night that was from the Siskiyou Economic Development Council um, that did a report where housing did come up as an issue for economic development, as we'll see a little bit later. Um, and so we have, you know, all of our events were posted in the newspaper, advertised on social media. Um, we also have a general plan newsletter that I believe I have all of you on as well, and I think I'll be adding Marley uh, because I note to myself. We've also done announcements at city meetings and tried to get information out and available as much as possible for as long as possible for people to comment on um, to get that in. We did also, again, try to have a number of different kinds of public input. So at one of our open houses, we had a dot exercise. Um, I think one of the most productive things that we did through this process is doing the interviews with people in the housing industry. Um, we did employers as well. So one of the things we heard from Rain Rock Casino, uh, Pfeiffer, which used to be Norcal, um, Walmart, you know, all of those places have a lot of employee shortages, and we're stating that housing's one of the biggest issues for getting those employees. So um, in, in those interviews, um, Trevor Eslick was here. He was also one of them. So we did also interview some of the local um, engineering firms and contractors, um, and tried to really get a mixture of people, a couple of property um, managers as well, so that we had a really well-rounded kind of idea of what was going on. And actually, that's one of the changes we'll discuss in here, is we've added all of those responses to the appendix. And so those are available for everyone to read.
Great, thank you.
This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. Just wanted to uh, give my two cents on two of the employers that were listed here have growth and expansion plans on the table. And they have both come to me. They've also participated in this process, but um, they're highly concerned about the lack of housing within the city of Wyrika. So just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you. I'm sorry.
With good reason.
Absolutely.
I take it away, Michelle and Vanessa.
Great, thank you for that, that insert there. Um, next slide, please. Um, so this is just overview of next steps. We are here in front of Planning Commission and taking any additional public comment here. There will be an opportunity at the special uh, meeting that's on January twenty-fourth that Juliana mentioned earlier. And it is going to the council for adoption on February seventh. Um, and the H C D filing deadline is February fifteenth. Um, and one thing that I did want to note, it also is that the housing element is not a static document. And the city reviews housing progress towards programs and progress towards getting housing developed annually and reports on that to H C D and, and to the council. And so, you know, programs can be course corrections and programs can be need it, uh, made if necessary throughout, you know, the life of the housing element. As long as it's still in compliance. And next slide, please. Um, I'm actually going to turn it over to Michelle here, and she is going to get into the contents of the housing element itself.
Thank you. Um, so this is um, it's a rather large document. Um, there's uh, broken into the three main chapters and then number of appendices. So there's the introduction um, to the housing element that just walks through the public um, participation, um, consistency with gen, the general plan, which is one of the requirements. Um, the goals, policies, and programs chapter, chapter two, is um, the, identifies the city's um, goals and policies to implement those programs um, to um, to meet the housing needs for all income groups. Um, also, there are implementation programs that um, that respond to housing needs, um, constraints that were identified through this process. And also um, to meet the, it, the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements, um, which is a new part of state law, um, which is really just another type of housing need, just looking at uh, housing need through a different lens. Um, and then the, another required um, section of a housing element is to analyze a jurisdictions, um, how they did um, great, and uh, as part of their previous element. Um, and so there's, that's chapter three, and um, to summarize the, there was um, city was, there was some staffing, there's a lot of things was dynamic, and so um, some, there was some progress made, um, especially in recent years, but um, staffing and just bringing resources was, was a challenge for the city. So you will see programs that are carried over um, from um, the previous housing element, the best cycle into this one, along with the, some new ones. And that's actually pretty common um, for, for cities and counties. Next si, slide, please. And so, like I mentioned, there are, there are numerous appendices um, for this housing element. Um, the appendix A and B, uh, the needs assessment and assessment for how, for housing. And they update um, the data, demographic and socioeconomic data for um, Wyrika from the last housing element, which uh, was twenty fourteen, twenty twenty. So that analysis was um, mostly relying on um, the twenty-ten uh, census. So this housing element being new and uh, update uses uh, the twenty-twenty census data uh, a lot and for a lot of the information and data you'll find in there. But there's other sources that are um, from the state, um, the um, Department of, uh, Department of Finance, there's information um, in there. And also um, appendix B, the uh, firmamentally furthering fair housing, which looks at kind of the distribution of um, uh, uh, the population um, by different indicators um, geographically in the city is kind of a s, uh, very high-level summary of what that does. Uh, one of the mandatory elements is the city's housing sites inventory. This is in appendix C. Um, and uh, due to the city having a, uh, not having a large uh, regional housing needs assessment number, there, there's one site um, that's identified to meet that, that requirement. Um, that doesn't mean that there's additional need. It, there's uh, definitely additional housing need in the city, but in terms of meeting this uh, legal requirement for regional housing need, um, appendix C is um, is focused on that. Appendix D talks about very available funding sources from the state and um, federal government for, so this would be subsidized housing. Um, also programs related um, to infrastructure development, um, which can be the cost associated with that can be an impediment. Appendix C is the glossary, you know, definitions, um, that sort of thing. Um, because there are a lot of technical definitions contained in the document, and the newest, new appendix is appendix X, F, F as in Frank, um, which contains the stakeholder interviews. Um, next slide, please. So this slide captures kind of the overarching themes of how the city's housing element, the, the programs that are in chapter two. There are overarching themes of how the, the housing only seeks to address the housing need for all income groups. The overarching themes of how the the housing only seeks to address the housing need for all income groups. So some of these are the were crafted out of response from what we heard from stakeholders from the community. The the workshops that the. Were held last year. And also from the the Planning Commission and the City Council. And also, there are programs that are mandated by state law. And so those are incorporated as well. But this gives you a kind of an overarching theme of. What? How the the housing element seeks to address the house needs. So. Making changes to the zoning regulations. Creating creating a better table, setting the table to make it easier for. Workforce housing to be brought into the community. That could be things achieved through adaptive reuse. It it's. That housing is an economic development issue. And. Again, going back to updating regulations to meet state requirements. There's a lot of that. But also small scale, single story housing for older residents and residents with disabilities, which is actually. Something that. Moves the city not only closer to addressing housing needs and that have been identified by the community, but also meets state law, the intent of state law. Next slide, please. So this slide just encapsulates briefly the summary of changes that were made that you see in your draft before you tonight. That are in response to comments that we received. The city received from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And addressing these changes is very important because this is part of the pathway, very important pathway for to get. The housing element, once it's adopted by the city council, to be certified by the state, which is helps with funding. You stay out of line of sight with the state because the. Accountability for housing, the sale has changed. Since, you know, the 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 last housing element. So. We we added four programs related to procedures for water and sewer connection to prioritize this. Those types of connections for housing developments then include affordable housing units. And that was actually pretty much a city practice already, but. State law actually requires there to be a adopted procedure. ADU updates, as you may have heard from either for tonight in the news, but. Making it easier to build accessory dwelling units. Has been a big. Big focus of the state of the state, and that could be ADUs could be for family members, they could be rented. There's, it's a way to create housing that would maybe more affordable, but that's at the discretion of the property owner. Streamline ministerial approval, SB thirty five, we added procedures regarding that. For qualified housing projects. And there's, there's quite a few qualifications to to be eligible and the site has to meet qualifications, but there's a state law that came online in. Twenty eighteen that for qualifying projects on a qualifying site. Jurisdictions across the state have to provide this ministerial streamlined process. And there's also. A program to update the definition of family. This is actually a catch up. To a California Supreme Court decision back that was taken in. In the late nineteen seventies. Is what that one reflects in. This is also pretty consistent that. The making those updates. I'm not sure why. So many jurisdictions are now having to catch up. It's just, you know, and or maybe why the the state's now looking at this more closely, but that's kind of where we're at on that. And then there were seven of the existing programs that were in the element in the previous draft that was before your planning commission. That were revised in response to comments again to get this element on, so it's on a pathway to certification with the state. And then we augmented the analysis for housing needs and firmly furthering fair housing, those two appendices. And we also added that stakeholder interview, those sheets in the responses as a new appendix. So that's, those are the changes that were made in summarized and. That concludes our our part and we are available for questions and. And for discussion of the planning commission and public comment.
All right. So I'm going to give our commissioner, our newest commissioner, Oland, a second to kind of settle in a little.
So sorry.
It's okay. So I'm just going to back up a little bit and kind of talk about the perspective that we took. When putting together the goals, policies and programs in here. In your in your big binders as well as in your packets. We tried to make it as easy as possible for some of these things because some of them are state mandated. You have to have them in here. So we denoted each of those with a little bear icon as well as a a table on the front of chapter two. To identify which of those programs we have to include moving forward. Several different things I did denote these if we have questions on specific programs. Now that are not state mandated that we have elected to propose in this draft. We tried to follow a number of different. Themes that we heard from our public input as well as input we've gotten from you as commissioners and the city council. And so there are several programs we have in here to help private property owners as well as developers save time, save money in the process. Update those zoning code pieces to be more flexible and allow a plethora of uses. And we did hear that quite a bit that. The adaptive reuse is basically a. A topic that was brought forward by members of the public. That was something that was kind of organic. And what that means is. We prioritize taking vacant and underutilized commercial buildings and allowing them to do either mixed use. Retail office space and housing, or converting those commercial spaces completely over to housing units. So. Think the shopco building, places like that. So that's what adaptive reuse is. And so that's something that is unique to Wayrica that. We've proposed in here to meet those challenges. One of the concerns that's come up throughout this process is residential changes to the single family. And so I have gone through all of the goals, policies and programs, and there is only one goal. Or one program, I should say, on page two dash two two and two dash two three goes on to both those pages. That is the only program that would change anything in an R one or an RA zone. And that is basically concerning group homes. And so just to clarify, this is the only change that would happen to R one and RA, which is single family residential and residential ag. Group homes. Group homes operating a single family residences that provide licensable services to more than six residents. Is subject to a conditional use permit in the R one and the RA zones. That is related to a statutory requirement, so it does need to stay in here. But I just wanted to let everyone know that when we went through the goals, policies and programs. We did not prioritize any zoning changes for the R one or the RA. So all of the proposed zoning changes for flexibility in zoning is concerned with your R two, which is your medium density residential. R three, high density residential and your commercial zones. So we have kept the zoning changes to those to those zones specifically. And so just wanted to address kind of that comment and and questioning some people had about changes to R one and RA. Now, I do want to be. Transparent and say there have been state law changes to R one and RA. Actually, it's been state changes to all residential uses. So for example, accessory dwelling uses. So every residential use, regardless of zone, is allowed to do one. Accessory dwelling unit and one junior accessory dwelling unit. So theoretically, you could have a triplex in a single family zone if you follow the the ADU law. And so those are currently in effect and those are state laws. And so those supersede anything. But in terms of any of the optional programs and policies we have in here, we kept them all out of R one except for that statutory requirement. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. That's been a a comment. But a lot of these that we have offered were either directly requested or related to the themes of trying to save money for. Property owners and developers, save time and also preserve our existing housing stock. So we do have several specifically two about doing a housing condition condition survey, which we actually just concluded. We're finishing up that report right now. And we are going through and prioritizing doing that on a more consistent basis. And then outreach to those property owners that have poor condition homes and trying to assist them with either getting grant dollars or assisting them with those projects. To see what's going on if they're on fixed income or unable to take care of their home. And so we're prioritizing both incentivizing them to take care of the homes and assisting them with that process. As well as we have language in here in a program that also prioritizes code enforcement. So if we're familiar with the Bluebird property. That that is a specific example of when we would use code enforcement to try and help with the housing condition. And other nuisance on that property. So we do have some preservation of units in here and those are optional. We just because we are an older city, we have an older housing stock. And you know, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to build a lot of new units if we're losing some of our older housing stock in the process. And so I just wanted to point those out. The other thing that we're also doing. We are in the process of completing is a site analysis and site inventory for high priority vacant properties throughout the city. And so it is a combination of city owned and privately owned properties. And so we'll have that site analysis back to the planning commission for review. When that document is done. And so what we did is we went through all of the vacant sites inventory, which is actually one of our programs. We're basically ranking them on ones that would do the best for tax credits and grant applications for housing. Developments on all scales. And then those will be reviewed by the City Council and Planning Commission on an annual basis as we start to prioritize housing. And so there are a couple of things we are working on in tandem with this that will come back very quickly as we move through the process. So that's what we were trying to do. And so this is basically what we have for you tonight. In reference to next Tuesday, we are scheduling a joint planning commission city council meeting available to you if you need additional time to go through this packet. To ask additional questions. So really tonight, it is noticed as discussion, possible action. You could take action tonight if you so choose. But we did open up next Tuesday at six thirty as well for you if you need additional time on that. So I will open it up for questions.
Yeah, thank you, Juliana. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. I just wanted to add on to those statements. So. The city council did approve a task order for housing tools to do the site inventory as. Ms. Lucchese pointed out. And the next step in that process is a request for qualifications with developers. And so the intent. Of city staff is to bring back an opportunity, a grant opportunity for standing up housing with a developer. In the city of Wayrica, they certainly, the city council will have to vote on that in a future meeting, but they anticipate that that will come before them this year. And so all of this kind of rolls into. Movement towards development. And so I just want you to think and understand in the back of your head that that is. The intention that at some point later this year, the city council will be voting. With your guys' input on moving forward possibly with a grant application with a developer to stand up housing in the city of Wayrica. Thank you.
And going back to it, we are prioritizing workforce housing and what workforce housing means talking to members of the public. Is that it's it's all income levels. So our moderate income is around thirty two thousand, up to about fifty five thousand dollars per year. And so that is a lot of the industries that we have here. Those are teachers, those are people working at Pfeiffer. Those are people, you know, working at the casino. And then there are lower income individuals working our retail sector. And so when we talk about workforce housing, it can be a combination of all of those levels. And so the state of California has opened up. The housing grants to include moderate income, which is new. It used to be all lower income or lower. So the very low and the extremely low income. And so when we are talking about these housing developments, they could be a combination of market rate, moderate, low. Or a variety of those. And so that will be part of the discussion when we bring back those individual proposals. So it's. When we're talking about workforce housing, it is all income levels that we're prioritizing.
Does anyone have any questions? Should we give? Next Tuesday is six thirty, correct? So. As I've only had. I haven't had time to read all this, so. I think I would get a bit more reading time. I don't know whether anyone else.
Do you have any questions tonight? We also should open up for public comment tonight if anyone has anything to.
Public comment to anyone.
Well, we have Commissioner Devlin has a question.
Oh, yeah. Commissioner Devlin, no, no question. I just wanted to acknowledge. The amount of hard work that went into preparing this document.
Thank you.
I did read the recommendations from the state of California and the ridiculous amount of information that they are requesting from you to be provided in this. Housing element.
I cried a little bit.
Didn't understand. I didn't understand how much work. Goes into. Putting this together. But it's well done.
Thank you. Yeah. And actually, we were told by HCD we had one of the shorter comment letters. It's nine pages. So. We did really good. Yeah, they did make me cry on the phone though. So. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Linsley, and I do have a question. How do you reach out to developers? I'm a little excited about what you're sharing with us. I think that's great. This community needs that. So in this process, how do you reach out to developers to let them know, hey, we have an opportunity to grant? This is what we need. How you do that?
Yeah, I'm going to cover this one if that's okay. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. So we have a consultant on board right now that did the site inventory. They're called Housing Tools. They're working on a number of different tasks for us under contract. And so what they do is you'll hear quite frequently a lot of acronyms for the new folks here. And so. You'll hear RFQ and RFP. And essentially that RFQ is a request for qualification. And so Housing Tools will craft a request for qualification. They will advertise that request for qualification. On different boards and sites. Throughout the state of California and ultimately developers go to those sites and then they will bid or they will give their qualifications. And then working with us, a decision will be made to choose developers that are qualified. To work with us on these grant applications and we will be paired with them through that process.
Yeah. And then in terms of, we talked about this at the draft. Housing element, previous Commissioner Rolzinski was talking about the different scales of developers. And so. We tried to make sure that the programs, policies and goals. Fit a number of level of developers because obviously we have smaller scale developers where during their entire career, they may put up. Five to ten houses. You know, when we go out for this RFQ, we are looking for more of a master developer for this piece. But during the outreach of this as a whole, we also take a look at our business licenses. We separate that by who does anything related to building construction. We did outreach to talk to them as well. We also just know some of the typical engineering and architectural firms. And so when we were outreach for this, we asked their input as well. And then the other thing too is we do get contacted frequently by developers doing scoping. And so they're looking for a particular property. They're looking for zoning information. And so we have about five housing developers who range from putting up ten units to fifty plus units. Who are interested in the programs we're possibly offering. And then they take a look at if we do have a site's analysis and inventory. So the the nice thing about this is is even if someone does not quote our RFQ. That site analysis is going to be open for anyone to see and that analysis we paid for. So in in a sense, if there is a smaller or medium sized developer who would like to go for these tax credits. As well as the grant applications, we do have a program in here to assist them. So we do try and open it up. It is a little bit of a learning curve even for myself because the housing finance. I mean, as you know, is is a whole different world for development and the tax credits. So we're here to assist them with that as part of one of our programs because we don't. Want to necessarily just assist large scale developers. We do want to give. Opportunities for individual property owners. We want to give opportunities to those small, medium. And the larger scale developers to do that. But the RFQ we will be putting out will be more oriented towards the large scale. But we will also advertise the site analysis for anyone else who would like to engage in that.
Wes, for public comment, anyone? Wes for public comment, anyone?
The other thing too is you're all invited. If you do need to have some specific questions or you want to walk through a specific area. Um, I do have to note, uh, we are expecting a multi-page additional comment letter from HCD um about our accessory dwelling unit regulations, because they have a whole different department that handles those. Um, so we are waiting for that, but that should not impact any of the programs that we offer. We kept that program broad to meet the state's requirements. And so that will be something we also talk about in the future is updating those ADU ordinances and procedures.
If we are, are we, I I feel like there's a few of us who might be running this up to my about it on Tuesday.
It is up to you as a commission. And so if you do want a motion to, um, I believe there is a suggested motion in the agenda.
I should speak.
Sorry. There is a a motion on page two, which is just to approve the proposed final draft for city council consideration. And that is up to the commission as a whole, and so.
Commissioner Devlin. Through all of this, I don't have questions. Motion to approve the proposed final grant of twenty twenty three. For the city council.
I would second that.
And so I would recommend that you discuss the motion at hand, and if there are commissioners who need more time to state that. And then after discussion has closed, I would recommend uh I can take a roll call vote for you.
Do you have any que- I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Anna Oland.
Um, um.
Um, Anne Oland, I would personally like to do to meet Tuesday night with the planning commission. I have read this, but I do have areas that are highlighted that I would like a little more information on, but that's just me personally.
Well, I I'm with you. I would refer to wait till Tuesday.
Marley gets to be the tiebreaker, though.
Oh, yeah. So what's the process on Tuesday night? If we wait to approve it until Tuesday night?
Yeah, you basically will just get a an additional week to review this document. If you have any questions or comments to myself ahead of time, just let me know and maybe I can answer them ahead of time. Um, we will have either Michelle or Vanessa available from Plan West as well to answer any questions. And then um basically it'll be joint, so we'll have both the city council there and you to ask any questions and workshop through that. Um, I mean, at this point, there's not much you can change in this document. Um, there are a couple of things that we can talk about if there's um, you know, uh, you know, a concern. Um, but at this point, um, it's just pretty much clarifying what's going forward. And then if there's any last minute tweaks we need to do.
And then uh
and and ultimately, it's a recommendation that the planning commission will make, so the city council um will then have their opportunity. So if you guys did make a vote today and you voted to recommend it, um it the next step is the city council has to adopt um the document, so.
And so if you do vote um in favor of moving forward today, you're very much welcome to still attend Tuesday, the twenty fourth. We will still host that day for the city council. Um, the reason why we were doing it joint is so that if you wanted to have a majority of you come to that meeting um to do that. Um, but if you are comfortable moving forward, you can vote and then we'll still have Tuesday. Um, and then the city council actually may choose to vote on the the element on Tuesday or on December seventh.
So the city council could still make tweaks to this then?
They could make some small tweaks to some of this, so yeah.
I'm comfortable with with uh voting with uh Commissioner Devlin. To go ahead and make your recommendation and move forward with this. We can spend a lot of time in that party this.
And actually, we we do have the public comment open until December seventh, so strike that. You cannot vote, they cannot vote on it on the twenty fourth. They will take till the seventh, so we'll make sure that if we do get any additional public comment, that's considered as part of that. Um, and so that will be included um for the city council's consideration.
Okay. Juliana, do you mean February?
Yes, I don't know what day of the week it is. Um, I don't know anymore. So, um, all right, so if there's no other discussion, I can do the roll for you.
Right.
All right, Commissioner Fernandez, uh, the motion on the table is to approve the proposed final draft of the twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one housing element for city council consideration. Council member Fernandez, council member Devlin, council member visit, or uh, I'm sorry, commissioners. I am so tired. Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Oland.
Aye.
Chair O'Brien.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So this is like over a year's worth of work. Thank you, Michelle and Vanessa. Um, so again, um, we still will hold the special meeting on Tuesday next week. If you have any specific questions or want to sit in on that, um, we will probably just notice it as a city council meeting, but you can feel free to ask questions on that. Um, and uh if you have anything else, we're gonna move into your future agenda items.
Yeah, I was dreaming, but uh future agenda items.
Page three, would you like me to read them?
Page three, thank you. Future agenda items. Just planning a future agenda items or action items and presentations to the planning commission that may occur within the next ninety days. All dates are tentative and subject to change in if needed. February fifteenth, twenty twenty three, undergrounding ordinance updates. Now, February twenty fifteen, twenty twenty three, Carnegie Building Conditional Use Permit for exterior alterations of a historic building.
So are there any other items that you have questions or would like to request on future agenda? We may have another item for our next meeting um for another tentative parcel map, uh, so that may be added as well. Thank you. And then uh you basically moved to adjourn.
Well, first of all, I'd like to um welcome the two new members of the planning commission. Marley and Anne.
Thank you.
And so we are now adjourned.
Look at that.